Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, thank you. Board of Commissioners' Public Meeting Agenda for Monday, November seventeen, two thousand and twenty-five. The time is six oh seven P M. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter two thirty-one, Public Law nineteen seventy-five, notice of this meeting was published in the November thirteen, two thousand and twenty-five issue of the Nutley Sun. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board and a copy is on file in the Municipal Clerk's Office. Deputy Mayor Evans?
Here.
Commissioner Tucci?
Here.
Commissioner Scarpelli? Commissioner Petraco and Mayor Kelly are absent, excused this evening.
Thank you. Let's move on to minutes.
We have Board of Commissioner meeting minutes for October twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five.
Move it.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
And that's it for minutes.
Thank you. Let's move on to bills.
Yes, we have a bill list for November seventeen, two thousand and twenty-five. Public Affairs, one hundred and twenty thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars and eleven cents. Revenue and Finance, three million, sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred and forty-two dollars and twenty-four cents. Public Safety, twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars and twenty cents. Public Works, forty-four thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty-three cents. Parks and Public Property, seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars and seventy-six cents. Water and Sewer Utility, one hundred thousand, three hundred and forty-one dollars and forty-six cents. Payroll as of November seventh, two thousand and twenty-five. Regular payroll total, nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars and eleven cents. Overtime payroll total, sixty-five thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars and thirty-four cents. Total payroll, one million, forty-three thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars and forty-five cents. For a grand total of four million, four hundred and eighty-three thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars and forty-five cents.
With bills?
Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli? And that's it for bills, Deputy Mayor.
That's great. I haven't seen anyone from the public here this evening. Commissioners, any announcements this evening?
Nope.
I only have one, just a reminder that on November nineteenth, from nine A M. to three P M. Motor vehicle inspection, car inspections will be hosted at Owens Field on Park Avenue. And there will be an officer, police officer on site. Madam Clerk, thank you for continuing to stay on top of the D M V. Now, let's move on to, we don't have any ordinances for introduction or for public hearing this evening. Commissioner Tucci, would you like to go first?
I would love to. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Whereas Department of Parks and Public Property determined due to unforeseen circumstances, families had to cancel participation in some of our programs that were offered, and whereas Department of Parks and Public Property has determined the need to refund these families, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the Treasurer be and is hereby authorized to refund payments for recreational programs in the amounts listed below. For our neighbors at fifty-four Memorial Street for travel basketball for the two thousand and twenty-five year in the amount of one hundred and twenty-five dollars. Our neighbors at three ninety-four Center Street, again for travel basketball in the same amount of one hundred and twenty-five dollars for two thousand and twenty-five year. The folks at sixty-one Union Avenue, travel basketball for two hundred and fifty dollars for the two thousand and twenty-five year. And our neighbors at thirty-eight Center Street on the second floor, travel basketball in the amount of one hundred and twenty-five dollars for the two thousand and twenty-five year. I move the resolution.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Whereas N J S A forty-eight, four dash eighty-seven provides that the Director of Division of Local Government Services may approve the insertion of any special item in the budget of any county or municipality when such items shall have been made available by law and the amount thereof was not determined at the time of the adoption of the budget. Whereas said Director may also approve the insertion of any item of appropriation for equal amount in Section One, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, hereby request the Division, the Director of Division of Local Government Services to approve the assertion of an item of revenue in the budget of the two thousand and twenty-five year in the sum of four hundred and three thousand, which is item, which item is now available as a revenue for from the Father Glotzback Park Inclusive Playground Grant pursuant to the provision of statute. Section Two, be it further resolved that alike sum of four hundred and three thousand be and same is hereby appropriated under the caption of General Appropriations Operations Excluded from Caps from the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, Father Glotzback Inclusive Playground Amount for other expenses in the amount of four hundred and three thousand. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution will be electronically filed with the Director for Approval as required by law. I move the resolution.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Whereas Department of Parks and Public Property has determined that the Commission Chambers of Township Hall needs renovations, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the Township Clerk be and she is hereby authorized to advertise for sealed bids for renovations to the Commission Chambers and Township Hall. Specifications are available in the Purchasing Department Township Hall, One Kennedy Drive, Nutley, New Jersey. Bids to be received on Wednesday, December seventeen, two thousand and twenty-five, in the Commission Chambers, third floor Township Hall, Kennedy Drive at ten A M. prevailing time, at which time they will be publicly open and read. I move the resolution.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
That's all I have, Mayor.
Would you like to move on to Commissioner Petraco?
I would love to. Just give me a second to find him.
I'll make sure he knows that.
Okay, this is for Commissioner Petraco, a resolution authorizing the award of a non-fair and open contract for Labor Council. Whereas Township of Nutley, Department of Public Safety has a need to acquire the services of a Labor Council as a non-fair and open contract pursuant to the provisions of N J S A nineteen colon forty-four A twenty point five. And whereas the law offices of Antonelli, Cantor, and Rivera located at three fifty-four Eisenhower Parkway, Suite one thousand in Livingston, New Jersey, has submitted a proposal indicating they provide Labor Council services at a rate of one hundred and seventy-five dollars per hour. And whereas the firm of Antonelli, Cantor, and Rivera has completed a business entity disclosure certification, which certifies that the firm has not made any reportable contributions to a political or candidate's committee in the Township of Nutley in the previous one year, and that contract will prohibit the firm from the firm of Antonelli, Cantor, and Rivera from making any reportable contributions through the term of the contract. And whereas this term of contract is January one, two thousand and twenty-six through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six, and may be extended as approved by this governing body. And whereas the contract is not to exceed seventy-five thousand, and whereas funds will be available from account six dash zero one zero dash zero one two, dash zero two oh five, and will be certified by the Chief Financial Officer, subject to the adoption of the two thousand and twenty-six municipal budget. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley will authorize a contract with the firm of Antonelli, Cantor, and Rivera as described herein. Be it further resolved that the business disclosure entity certification and the determination of value be placed on file with this resolution, and be it further resolved that a notice of this action shall be printed in the Nutley Sun in accordance with Local Public Contracts Law. I move the resolution.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye. This is also a resolution. Which I will review, resolve, and going to township of Nutley, Kansas, New Jersey, that according to provision of R S forty-eight, colon, four, the mission is eight, following transfer, sorry. You actually, in the two thousand and twenty-five pledge, be it same, hereby authorizing the Department of Public Safety from firing E M S salarying wages in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars to fire E M S other expenses in the like amount of one hundred thousand dollars, requiring salarying wages in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars to fire O E D in the same amount of two hundred thousand dollars for a total of three hundred thousand. That's for this resolution.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci? Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye. I think that's all, Commissioner.
Commissioner.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Whereas N J S A forty-eight, four dash eighty-seven provides that Director of Division of Local Government Services may approve the insertion of any special item in the budget of any county or municipality when such items shall have been made available by law, and the amount thereof was not determined at the time of the adoption of the budget. Whereas said Director may also approve the insertion of any item of appropriation for equal amount. And Section One, now therefore resolve that the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, hereby request the Director of Division of Local Government Services to approve the assertion of an item of revenue in the budget of the year two thousand and twenty-five in the amount of two hundred and ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars, which an item is now available as revenue from C D B G pursuant to the provisions of the statute. Section Two, be it further resolved that alike sum of two hundred and ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars, being the same, hereby appropriated under the caption of General Appropriations, Essex County, Urban County, C D B G grant, Community Development Block grant, other expenses, two hundred and ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be electronically filed with the Director for Approval as required by law. I move the resolution.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas N J S A forty-eight, four dash eighty-seven provides that the Director of Division of Local Government Services may approve the insertion of any special item in the budget of any county or municipality when such items shall have been made available by law, and the amount thereof was not determined at the time of the adoption of the budget. Whereas said Director may also approve the insertion of any item of appropriation for equal amount. And Section One, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, hereby request the Director of Division of Local Government Services to approve the insertion of an item of revenue in the budget the year two thousand and twenty-five in the sum of four hundred and twenty-two thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars, which item is now available as a revenue from the municipal aid pursuant to provisions of statute. Section Two, be it further resolved that alike sum of four hundred and twenty-two thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars be and is hereby appropriated under the caption of General Appropriations due to the Department of Transportation, Municipal Aid, Other Expenses, four hundred and twenty-two thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be electronically filed with the Director for Approval as required by law. I move the resolution.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas Township of Nutley advertised for proposals for the marketing of recyclable materials on June fourth, two thousand and twenty. Whereas the request for proposals for the marketing of recycling materials were accepted by a Township Clerk on June twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty. Whereas Integrity Recycling Waste Solutions, one eleven Route thirty-one, Suite two twenty-three, Flemington, New Jersey, was awarded for a three-year contract award with two one-year options for contract extension effective October first, two thousand and twenty. And whereas Township's contract with Integrity Recycling Waste Solutions expired on September twenty, September thirty, two thousand and twenty-five. Whereas a need to extend the contract with Integrity Recycling Waste Solutions for ninety days effective on October first, two thousand and twenty-five through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five, with all the terms remaining same as set forth in the original contract. And whereas funds are available from account number five oh one, four twenty-three, two oh nine, in the amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars. Have been certified by Chief Financial Officer, said certification be attached to this resolution. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that a contract be extended to Integrity Recycling Waste Solutions not to exceed twenty thousand dollars. And that the Mayor, Township Clerk, are hereby authorized to enter into and sign said contract by the Township of Nutley Board of Commissioners. I move the resolution.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas bids for the two thousand and twenty-three commingled recycling collection service was received and opened on December twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. Whereas F Bosso Junior Rubbish Removal, fifty-nine dash ninety-three South Twentieth Street, Irvington, New Jersey, was the lowest responsible bidder. Whereas the Township awarded a contract to F Bosso Junior for a two-year contract with an option for two one-year extensions at the same price subject to availability of funds in the subsequent annual municipal budget to be awarded solely at the Township's discretion. Whereas contracts shall be extended for the first additional contract year beginning February first, two thousand and twenty-six through January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-seven, with the same price option subject to availability of funds in the subsequent annual municipal budget. Whereas the funds will be available from account number six oh one, four twenty-three, two oh nine, in the amount of three hundred and sixteen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. And account number seven oh one, four twenty-three, two oh nine, in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. And we certify the Chief Financial Officer, said certification be being subject to the adoption of the two thousand and twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-seven municipal budgets. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that a contract be awarded to F Bosso Junior Rubbish Removal not to exceed three hundred and forty-five thousand. And that the Mayor, Township Clerk, are hereby authorized to enter into and sign said contract from Township of Nutley. I move the resolution.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
This is Resolution number three two seven dash twenty-five. A resolution by the Township of Nutley authorizing an application to the Complete Streets Technical Assistance Program. Whereas no direct funding is provided, selected municipalities will receive free direct technical assistance services to complete specific tasks related to advancing of complete streets initiatives in their community. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley authorize Commissioner and Director of Public Works, Dr. Joseph P. Scarpelli, to submit an application to the Complete Streets Technical Assistance Program to receive free direct technical assistance to complete a specific task related to advancing complete streets and also commits pertinent municipal staff to coordinate, collaborate with Sustainable Jersey for Eastern Transportation Center and New Jersey Transportation Planning Authority to support the successful and timely delivery of technical assistance services. I move the resolution.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
This is Resolution three twenty-eight dash twenty-five, Township of Nutley Resolution to Support, Resolution to Adopt the Township of Nutley's Procedures for Administration Inspection of Federal Aid Highway Projects. I move the resolution.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Thank you. I'm going to read mine and then I'll read Commissioner Mayor Kelly's.
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley and the County of Essex, State of New Jersey. The Treasurer is hereby authorized to refund overpayments of tax charges in the amount of thirty-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars and eighty-four cents for the blocks and lots and addresses and amounts listed in the resolution. So move.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, the Treasurer is hereby authorized to refund overpayments of utility charges in the amount of three thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty-five cents for block thirty-four hundred, lot five, for the amounts listed in the resolution. So move.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas R S forty-eight, colon, five dash seventeen allows for the cancellation of property tax credits for delinquent amounts and amounts less than ten dollars, where as the governing body may authorize the tax collector to process without further action on their part, any cancellation of property credit, tax credits or delinquencies of less than ten dollars. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, is hereby authorize the tax collector to cancel said amounts as deemed necessary. So move.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci? Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas R S fifty-four, colon, four dash sixty-seven permits the governing body of each municipality to fix the rate of interest to be charged for non-payment of taxes or assessments subject to any abatement or discount for late payment of taxes provided by law. And whereas R S fifty-four, colon, four dash sixty-seven, as amended, has been amended to permit the fixing of said rate of eight percent per annum on the first fifteen hundred of delinquency and eighteen percent on any amount in excess of fifteen hundred dollars. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley as follows, one, the tax collectors hereby authorized and directed to charge eight percent per annum on all taxes becoming delinquent, which is the minimum amount that we're allowed to charge by statute that becomes delinquent after the due date, subject to any abatement or discount for the late payment of taxes provided by law effective January one, two thousand and twenty-six. Quarterly payments made by cash check or money order shall have a ten-day grace period. Any payment not made in accordance with Section Two of this resolution shall be charged interest from the due date as forth in the section of the resolution. So move.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas Township of Nutley has a need to acquire the services of an independent professional planning expert to assist the Township with the preparation of zoning ordinance revisions and to formal regulatory zoning ordinances to be retained on a non-fair and open basis pursuant to the provisions of N J S A forty-eight, colon, eleven dash five. Res Paul Ricky, Ricky Planning in one seventy-seven Monmouth Avenue, Atlantic Heights, New Jersey possesses the requisite education experience and licensure to provide the services at a cost of one hundred and thirty-five dollars an hour not to exceed five thousand dollars, whereas the anticipated term of the contract is January one, two thousand and twenty-six through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six. Whereas funds will be available from account six oh one, two nineteen, two oh five, and will be certified by the Chief Financial Officer as said certification being subject to the two thousand and twenty-six municipal budget. Res Paul Ricky Planning has completed and submitted the Business Entity Disclosure Certificate, which certifies that they have not made any reportable contributions to a political or candidate committee in the Township in the previous, Township of Nutley in the previous one year. And the contract will prohibit them from making any reportable contributions through the term of the contract. Now, therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, authorizes the Mayor Municipal Clerk to enter into a contract on a non-fair and open basis in accordance with N J S A forty-eight, colon, eleven dash five, with Ricky Planning at the stated rate of one thirty-five an hour and not to exceed five thousand dollars. So move.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas the Township of Nutley has a need for the services of an outside counsel to provide consultation services regarding employment matters. Whereas the law firm of Otul Scrivo, fourteen Village Park Road, Cedar Grove, New Jersey, is qualified to provide these services. Whereas Otul Scrivo has submitted a two thousand and twenty-six fee schedule which provides such services at an hourly rate of two hundred and ninety-five dollars an hour for legal services by attorneys. Whereas the contract will not exceed twenty-five thousand dollars for the period January one, two thousand and twenty-six through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six. And funds will be available from account six oh one, two oh eight, two oh five, which will be certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being subject to the adoption of the two thousand and twenty-six budget. Whereas the law firm of Otul Scrivo has completed and submitted a bit disstanding disclosure certification which certifies that they have not made any reportable disqualifying contributions to a political or candidate committee in the Township of Nutley in the previous one year. That would violate N J S A nineteen, colon, forty-four A dash twenty dot five or the Township's local unit pay-to-play ordinance or New Jersey Election Law Enforcement Commission disclosure requirement. It's now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that a contract for outside counsel to provide consultation services be authorized as follows, one, A, the Mayor and Township Clerk are hereby authorized and directed to execute seal and deliver a two thousand and twenty-six contract for professional services for, with Otul Scrivo pursuant to a non-fair and open process in accordance with N J S A nineteen forty-four A, colon, excuse me, nineteen, nineteen, colon, forty-four A dash twenty dot five for the term beginning January one, two thousand and twenty-six through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six for the stated hourly rate, for the stated hourly rates not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars. Be a copy of this resolution shall, as well as the contract and the Business Entity Disclosure Certificate and Business Entity Disclosure Campaign Contributions, shall be placed on file with the clerk. So move.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
I think I read mine faster than you guys. Just saying, just saying. Remaining resolutions are for Mayor Kelly, of which I'll read in his absence. Whereas raffle license applications have been received from the following organizations, Friends of Nutley Singers and St. Mary's Church for licensures for tricky trays, cash raffles, bingo, and instant raffles for various states as listed in the resolution, whereas the applications have been reviewed and approved by the Municipal Clerk and the Police Department. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey that the aforementioned licenses are hereby approved and the Municipal Clerk is authorized to issue said license. And so move.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
The next resolution is for the two thousand and twenty-six newspaper designation be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the following newspapers are hereby designated as the official newspapers for advertising for the Township of Nutley for the year two thousand and twenty-six, both in print and electronic editions. The Nutley Sun, One Garrett Mountain Plaza, Woodland Park, New Jersey, Star Ledger, One Star Ledger Plaza, Newark, New Jersey, Herald News, One Garrett Mountain Plaza, Woodland, New Jer, the Woodland Park, New Jersey. Be it further resolved that Tapping to Nutley will be be and is hereby designated as the electronic news source for which notices and other matters are to be provided under the Open Public Meetings Act of the State of New Jersey, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law. So move.
Okay.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas pursuant to N J S A forty, colon, sixty-seven, dash, three, twenty, twenty-three, dash, that one S, Arbor Hills is recognized as a qualified private community. Whereas the township is responsible for reimbursing a qualified community for certain services, including solid waste disposal or to provide said services to a qualified private community in some fashion as the municipality provides these services on public roads and streets. Whereas the township has elected to reimburse Arbor Hills for solid waste disposal for the year two thousand and twenty-six. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of the Mayor and Township Clerk are hereby authorized to enter into a municipal service agreement for solid waste collection and disposal with four thirty-two owners, Inc., One River Road, Nutley, known as Arbor Hills. And the form approved by the Township Attorney Funds in the amount of eighteen thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars will be available from account six oh one, one thirty-eight, two oh nine, and will be certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being subject to the adoption of the two thousand and twenty-six budget. A copy of this resolution, as well as the municipal service agreement, shall be placed on file with the clerk, and a notice of this action shall be printed once in the Nutley Sun. So move.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County of Essex, New Jersey, that the Township enter into an agreement with the New Jersey Arc Essex County Unit Inc., a New Jersey corporation with offices on Naylan Avenue in the Township of Livingston, Essex County, New Jersey, wherein the unit agrees to provide services for mentally disabled individuals and their families in the Township of Nutley effective January one, two thousand and twenty-six through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six in consideration of payment of the town, by the Township of Nutley to the unit of one thousand dollars payable on one soon as a partial reimbursement of costs and services. Funds will be available in account six oh one, one one six, two hundred, in the amount of one thousand dollars and will be certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being subject to the adoption of the two thousand and twenty-six budget. Now therefore be resolved by the Mayor, that the Mayor and the Township Clerk are hereby authorized and directed to execute said agreement on behalf of the Township of Nutley. So move.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
The next resolution, number three eleven, dash, twenty-five, is tabled to the next meeting. The same is for Resolution number three twelve, two thousand and twenty-five, is also tabled to the next resolution, the next meeting of the two more. Whereas N J S A forty-eight, colon, sixty-one, one, S, the Uniform Shared Services and the Consolidation Act authorizes and empowers local units to enter into agreements with other local entities regarding certain services. Whereas the Township and the Board of Education recognize the value of inter-local cooperation as a way of reducing duplication and overlap of services. Whereas the Township and Board of Education have previously entered into such an agreement in order to define the respective rights and obligations of the Township and the Board of Education regarding the employ of a physician, school of physician to provide health services. As now therefore be resolved that the Township of Nutley and the Board of Education wish to extend existing shared services for physicians, school services for the period of January one, two thousand and twenty-six through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six, for which the Township will be compensated fifteen thousand, four hundred and eight dollars to be paid in twelve equal installments of one thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars each. So move.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
Last resolution, this is a resolution of the Township Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley engaging the law firm of Otul Scrivo as counsel for the Township of Nutley concerning certain legal matters with respect to the on three redevelopment area. Counsel, is it, it's okay if I read it by title, or do you want me to read the whole thing? Now therefore be resolved by Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley that the Mayor, Principal, and Municipal Clerk are hereby authorized to enter into a contract with the law firm of Otul Scrivo at an hourly rate of two ninety-five an hour for an amount not to exceed thirty-five thousand dollars. Be it further resolved that the Business Entity Disclosure Certification and the Business Entity Disclosure Campaign Contribution shall be placed on file with this resolution. Be it finally further resolved that the, a copy of this resolution shall be published as required by law within ten days of its passage. So move.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Be it finally further resolved that the, a copy of this resolution shall be published as required by law within 10 days of its passage. So move.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli?
Aye.
That concludes our formal-
Did we miss one?
Did I miss one? Did I miss that one? Oh, all right. I'll do.
I think, I think I got 318, but-
Which one?
318?
I did 395, I read that one.
I think it's 318.
It must have been.
Right, so one of them got missed.
No.
Three, maybe?
Yeah. I did that to make sure you guys are following.
Yeah. Keep us on our toes.
Last one. Whereas the Township of Nutley has a need to retain the professional services of Ricky Planning to provide professional planning and affordable housing consultation services, including but not limited to the preparation of an updated housing element and fair share plan and spending plan. Whereas the contract is awarded without competitive bidding as a professional service in accordance with NJSA 1944A 20.4 or 20.5 of the local public contracts, all because the contract is for professional services. Whereas the Board of Commissioners has determined that Ricky Planning located at 177 Monmouth Avenue in the Atlantic Highlands is qualified and best suit to provide the services to the Township. Whereas Ricky has completed and submitted a Business Entity Disclosure Certificate, which certifies that it has not made, he has not made any reportable disqualifying contributions